Oh, how's that for timing?
Yeah.
We'll need to check the board. You got one.
We do.
I'm going to turn.
And do you have the ability to mute everybody from there and unmute them if needed?
Mm-hmm.
As soon as we get the okay from the boss, we will start. We're going to call this meeting for order. And everybody says, hey, it's time to do the pledge of allegiance. Pete, would you leave us in the pledge of allegiance, please?
A pledge of allegiance. To the United States of America and to the republic which sustains, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Can we get a roll call of the officers, please?
Here.
Here.
Daniel?
Here.
Eden?
Present.
Eden?
Present.
Ronnie?
Here.
Stupin?
Here.
All right, let's record show that all members of the council are here. First up, we have minutes of December 12th and also minutes of December 20th. Before we jump into that, and I'll take a motion on it, just a couple of callouts and clarifications. You'll notice that the minutes now have a disclaimer on the bottom that refers to the MTA code that you have to meet for legally sufficient minutes. And those of you who were not members of council at the last meeting, in checking with Dan, you are able to vote as basically a vote of confidence in the process. So if you feel like you'd rather say that's okay too, but you are certainly within procedure and rights to vote if you want to. Also, if there are amendments or things that you think should be included in the minutes that are not included in the minutes, when we open up discussion, is an appropriate time to make a motion to amend and vote whatever we want to amend. Assuming you have four of you, then the minutes will be amended accordingly. And then to make Lonnie's job a little bit easier in the future, if when you're having comments or something you specifically want to have recorded in the minutes, if you would just say, for the record, or I'd like this to be in the minute, that's a signal for her to help make mine there. I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes of December 12th.
I move.
All right. Any discussion? During roll call vote, please.
Eftain.
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Ronnie?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. I will request that everyone use their out loud voices as best as possible. All right, I'll entertain.
Out loud voices are exciting.
Yeah, well, let me rephrase this. If you think I was talking about you on that statement, I was. All right, I'll entertain a motion for the December 20th minute.
I move.
Second.
Oh, that was great. Any discussion? All right, hearing now, roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Eftain.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Just have to say one thing.
Please.
Really nice not having to be last all the time now.
My last name is Westwood. I underlined, or Westward, or Westdrugg, or.
All of those.
But all of them start with a W. All right, next up is warrants payable. And just before I entertain a motion to approve the warrants, I want to call out that there is a basket in the lobby that is available to the public. So anybody who wants to come in and review the warrants on Tuesday that is available just in the lobby, that is public information, public record, you don't even have to talk to anybody, it's just there on the wall, you're welcome to pull that out and look through it and bring any questions along there. With that, I will entertain a motion for warrant to approve warrants payable.
I move to approve claims in the amount of $224,903.15.
And with the second, do we have any discussion we'd like to have on that?
There were three payments that were actually from December 31st, and they were our bond payment. So those had actually been paid by some first because that's when they were due and the bank had not sent us the invoice for those in time for our last council meeting. But they're pretty standard. So it wasn't really that much out of the ordinary. Sorry.
Outside voice.
Any other comments?
I just had a question on the Great West Engineering and maybe some of the previous council members. Did this ever go out for bid for Great West? Because Brent Moore at one point was saying that it hadn't, and it's not a lot of money. I just don't know whether that went out to bid. Who would know? It did go out to bid. And are they within their bids?
Yeah, they have their, so it went out for an RFP for an engineer. They were the only ones that, I think it was, they were the only ones that came back what they bid, and then the council had to approve being them, to be honest.
Because there was one.
Was that, yeah.
Because there was the only one.
There's one. And that is one of those things that if the council wants to look at modifying or making our recommendation to modify that policy to handle it if we only get one, but that would be something I'm cautious of because sometimes we're only going to get one. Or one viable. Several years back, I remember we got a, we got trash bid, and they weren't from the same planet, so. So that's, yeah, but that's something. So there was a, for those who may not have heard, there wasn't, the recollection is that there was indeed a bid process, there was one respondent, and it was approved in, I think, Q1 of, at 30 early 2022. Other questions or comments? Roll call vote, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
By the way, I'm new at this, so if you see me goof on something, please call point of order and drag me out. I'm absolutely okay with that. All right, mayor's comments. So a couple of things to call out in the packet and in the agenda that I hope are evident. First off, if we could just had three more days with nothing else coming in, we would be getting ready to have the most spectacular meeting you have ever witnessed in your life. Having said that, that's not the way it works. So I appreciate Lonnie's help in helping me put together an agenda rather quickly. There is a lot of information here, but I hope as you review that, you recognize that it's not 200 pages you've got to get through and make a decision on Tuesday. So that's something that I worked with Lonnie, and that's one of those things I want to do differently. As we start, I'm very humbled and honored to be here. From seven o'clock on Tuesday, it's been exciting. I'm glad to be here. I feel like we're addressing a lot of things, but we're addressing it from the biggest pebble in our shoe and kind of working our ways out. And so there may be some things on here we're just introducing, and we'll take that on. And with that, I kind of want to add a thank you to those who preceded us. We have several council members who were on the previous board and also mayor's path, some I've served with, some that I have not. But like I said, it's humbling to step into those shoes and pick that up. And I welcome the opportunity and look forward to working with all of you. There are some things that I put in the packet that are a one-time thing. I don't think that they are forever, but at the same time, I think I'm going to have a special little folder that I bring them in so I have them at every meeting, things like The Roberts Rules of Orders. I've got a couple of books above, I think that's a good reference. I think The Charter is a good reference for us to have on hand. I looked around, I was not able to get an executed copy of it, but I got the certified copy that fit nicely onto five pages and.
Should I wait?
That's why it says proposed on it, because I need to get hold of the collections office and see if they have it. I've chased all the records because that was a comment that has been made several times.
I have a copy.
That has a signature?
I'm not sure. Of course, it's tonight, I didn't bring my book. So I'll.
That's all right. We will welcome any assistance we can get in getting there. Yeah, we've got two or three copies, and they were all based on the proposed, and it had the fill in the blanks, but they were not executed.
Okay.
So one of the things that I hope stands out immediately both to council members and to the public is that we've all had the experience of being on council. And we've had that huge packet on Friday that we think, oh my gosh, I have to read through this and I have to make a meaningful decision on Tuesday, and is that fair and is that right? And I guess I want to add, is that necessary? And I would propose that it's not. I think it's more important that we do things right than we do it right now sometimes. And there will be a couple of things that we introduce today to get a chance to look at that. But you will notice that things that are new, that haven't been on the agenda before, that are up for action, and we actually didn't say action on that, I mentioned I'm new at this, have a little what's called a double dagger next to it. And basically what that says is if it's not been previously included and we haven't seen it before, then it requires a procedural motion to take it up. Basically, we don't want to take away the ability to handle emergency situations, but I think this is more conducive to the council being able to perform its role as the council to have a chance to look at things, have two weeks to review and ask questions while discussion on it, we'll make sure we're doing it right, and then we can take that action up at the next. At the same time, if we have a flood and we need to take an emergency action, my assumption is that everybody would be on board and say, I agree, let's take that. I just kind of want to set that precedent. And then we can look, we'll, we'll talk a little bit later about the rules of procedure. We can even look at whether you guys want to make that part of the rules of procedure, which kind of helps perpetuate things going forward as well. There are some other things that are kind of late, last minute additions to the inbox that have come in that I do just want to mention. One of them is that there will be a filming crew in town next Saturday. They reached out and they wanted basically the blessing of the city for their insurance purposes. I reached out and talked to our Chamber of Commerce, who has worked with them before and got her blessing. But my response to him was, when you talk about getting a response from the city, to me, that is this word. You guys represent the city. So I have told him I will get back with him tomorrow, but I would like to at this time ask for the council's blessing to say, yes, they're coming to do this tourism video. Do I have, is there out here by chance? I don't. But I can answer any questions on that.
Are you talking the 11th?
I, did I, did I think my line?
So you just picked it up.
Yes, it's coming Saturday.
Okay. It is going to be very, very cold out.
It's, and they, it's a small crew, and I guess they have a script, and they've been doing lots of different, basically towns that border the park, and they put out these cute little videos, don't pet the large fuzzy hamsters, that sort of stuff. I don't know that that's their, that's their language and that's their script. But my first, my first concern was to reach out and make sure that they were coordinating with our chamber, and it was in line with the message that our chamber works. And then my second one was, I said this, that I thought the approval needed to come from this board. So I would like to request your, probably the way to do it is to have to make a motion to provide the mayor approval to grant them our blessing to come.
I move to grant the mayor the ability to.
I second that motion.
Thank you. Any discussion?
So it sounds like you spoke with them, they have insurance, stuff in a row, they understand, like follow the rules, you can't block out parks, et cetera.
Yeah, and they did cover that. It's a group of six, including the actor, it's all handheld equipment, and they're, they feared they'd probably be here all of 20 minutes.
Oh, well, invite them to sit longer and they can stay.
I, I, I told them they were welcome to stay and spend as much of their money here as they like.
Perfect. Did you tell them about the Elks breakfast on that morning?
No, but, but thank you, that does bring us to the late, last minute email.
Oh, you threw one.
Oh, leave it, Lonnie, thank you. After the report. Is there any other discussion? Lonnie, can I get a roll call?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eden?
Yes.
Stupin?
Yes.
Thank you. Like I said, to me, that one popped up, and it was just like, what a great example to show what the mayor does and what the council does. So thank you for giving me permission to offer their, offer our welcome. Informational only, there is a pancake breakfast on the, I have the 13th, is that right?
Yes, that's Saturday.
That's, yeah, Saturday the 13th at 8:00 a.m. It is being, it is being sponsored by the Elks, and it is a donations only, but certainly everybody's aware, and the proceeds go to.
Volunteer firefighters in the county, because the Elks have funds for the firemen, but not for the volunteers. So last year, they raised $2,000 to help pay for equipment, et cetera, for the volunteers. So it would be nice if everybody come out and donate to that.
And no offense to any of the restaurant establishments in town, but they make really yummy pancakes. All right. By the way of information, at 6:00 p.m. on this Thursday, Dan Clark is doing his standard training that he does for council members. I've sat through it many times, I plan on being there, it's going to be Thursday evening at six o'clock online. So I will send all of you an email that I've BCC to council members so that if anybody responds, it doesn't create a quorum. And I will include the link with that, as well as an update to, they've got kind of a shorter condensed version of the, to the official's handbook, which the training is going to be based off of. So I will send that out to everybody, so I'll be looking for that. And again, I'll send that BCC so that we don't have to worry about creating. Also, along the lines of Dan, in February, it is anticipated, we don't have an exact date yet, but he's going to do a similar thing for all of the cities, which is, I think, pretty common statewide, about the statutory requirement to review the form of government. And we'll look at that. That, it appears from the initial review that that's a two to three year process, and get started because we'll want to have something on the ballot mid-year in order to get that process started in a timely fashion. And so as I get further information on that, I will let you know. Questions or comments and anything thus far? The next two items, we've got reappearance of the Red Lock Roberts ambulance district board. board member, and I would just like council's blessing to reappoint him, Lonnie, help me.
Hayman.
Tim Hayman, who has been on there and has expressed that she is willing to continue serving there. I would entertain a motion to support that.
I move to support Tim Hayman to continue on the ambulance board.
All right. Any discussion in our conversation? All right, let me see if I can do this one a little bit further. I will entertain a motion to...
Do you want to...
Pardon?
Do you want to vote on that?
Oh, oh, Steve, let me hear you. Can I get a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right. Now that that one's done, I will entertain a motion to reappoint Jim Hilderman to the cemetery district.
I would move to reappoint Jim.
Or to approve the mayor's...
Approve the mayor to, yeah.
To appoint Jim.
Yes, on Jim. Okay.
All right. Discussion?
I sit next to Jim Hilderman and I can tell you, he spends more time up there finding graves and digging them, even in this really bad weather, so he has just been wonderful for the cemetery. Wonderful.
My first exposure to city government was when they were sitting in on all those meetings, when they were creating the cemetery district, and I know he was very, given advice to live there as well.
Well, half the people in here will, you know, we know.
Hey, why don't we vote on this one?
You guys know that.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right. On the next one, on the Red Lodge Parks, we've actually got a couple of different boards. What I am going to do, I've got two letters on the Red Lodge Parks Board. I am going to, I would prefer to defer that until next time, just because I have not had a chance to speak with both of the individuals. I don't know of a pressing need that requires that, and so I think this is a wonderful example for me to say it's okay to put something off for two weeks.
Do you want me to say I move we vote on this matter?
No, it's mayor's comment. We, 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 I wouldn't, I wouldn't object, but with your, with your permission, I'll just say vote, because we really want to vote. All right. Yeah. All right. I have two land use permissions, or two land uses that are here. Again, neither one of these, to my understanding, has an immediate need, so at this point, I have not yet given them my approval. My review of the regulations and my understanding of the regulations, and I'll look to the folks here, is that the regulation was written to say if they meet checkbox A, B, C, and D, then the mayor shall approve that. Is that a fair understanding of the way the process is going to work?
After it goes to the department head to make sure everything's okay with them, and those are the boxes that basically get checked.
And, and my understanding is that we have solicited all of that input and I have not yet received all of that input, so I will be deferring on approving these as well, but at the same time, if there's any questions that you guys have that you want me to address, I would welcome that input at this time.
I was, I was curious on the Shakespeare in the Park, because they're going to be serving liquor there, and I didn't see anything attached in here regarding who would be serving and, well, I think it did say in here, hmm, it did say who, but it didn't have as much information as I noticed the one for the Beardo's Rally for Snow Creek, closing of the road. It just seemed that this one had less information on the alcohol part of it than the other one did.
Okay.
Yeah, we just, I don't know if we need it. Maybe.
Enough? Go ahead.
I was just going to say, in the past, I know last year, they had this same request, and typically it's a local bar that comes with their bartenders and they're all certified and they have license to do that. Last year it was in insurance, and last year it was when they get the high pies, and I'm not sure if, to their spending to each this time, but that's who's got it.
I will, I will, I will follow up on that.
And I would just say that, you know, just make sure that their insurance meets the liability requirements for alcohol serving. And then as you noticed, they use the old application and not the new application, so it's not a big deal, except for the fact that I don't believe that we're allowing nonprofits to waive the fees, but they do have to get the full fee.
That was, that was, that was another question that I had, because it was on that, and this is the first one that we've seen that as a nonprofit, and your understanding is that we don't do that.
Yeah, I'd have to look back at the ordinance, but we did change those fees. I guess the fees were part of the resolution. I'm sorry, it wasn't an ordinance.
I think they're grabbing the previous, having, bringing, updating them.
And, and one of the other concerns that I had on it, when it talks about notifying the neighbors and basically that you've done it, it just said, "There's a list on file and has been for decades," and I don't, people move, so I think that, I think we'll ask them, I will ask them to go ahead and get the current list. Is there any direction you want to give on that?
That was my only concern on there, just making sure that all the insurance is in place, proper users are on file.
Right. So, given that feedback, I've got a couple of additional things to follow up on, and once we have the feedback from all of the department heads, if there's any concerns and address those, I anticipate that I will approve those for the new process and then notify you next time. Any questions or comments on that? All right. Oh, I specifically left my phone upstairs. Does somebody have a phone with a three-minute timer? Will you be my...
Lonnie, will you be my timer?
Right. So, we have reached the point in the agenda for public comments. Anyone may address the council at this time on any topic within the city jurisdiction, not specifically on the agenda. And what that means is that when we're talking about anything that's on the agenda, we will open it up for public comments at that time on the agenda, just to kind of keep close things together on that. All right. So, with that, let's go ahead and open up the public comments. There's rules. Be respectful, state your name, state where you reside, and the comments should be directed to the chair, and, and then Lonnie will run our timer. Just to kind of manage some additional expectations, this is one of those spectacular speeches I would have written for, with three extra days, and I'll try to have it done next time. Just to manage expectations, this is the opportunity for the public to address the council. That does not mean that the council is necessarily able or required to respond at that point in time. We will get responses back to folks where appropriate, and I'll kind of figure out what exceeds that limit, but I just want to amend that expectation. If it's not public Q and A, it's your opportunity to make comments and say, "I'd like a response back on something," and then we'll handle it from there. With that, we'll open the public comment. Going twice?
Is that online?
Pardon? Oh, wait. Do we have any public comments online? If you are online and have public comments, please turn on your camera and then we'll know you're there. Or unmute? Raise your hand, do a jig? Going once? Twice? All right, that closes the public comment section. All right. So, our first, we actually have very few things that really need to be done right now. One of the most important ones is that you, all, need to appoint the council president. And just as kind of a practice of how I envision, how I envision something being handled that's not been on the agenda before, I will entertain, entertain a motion, take up appointing a council president. So, this is just, yes, we're going to talk about it.
I move to entertain a motion to, I'll move to appoint or nominate a president.
Okay.
Is that good enough?
A motion to take up the action?
Take...
Okay. Do I have a ten second?
Second.
All right. Any discussion on it? You guys like the idea of not having surprises thrown in?
Yeah, great. I'm a big fan.
All right. Vote. After we, this is procedure, we just do by hand. This is just, are we going to take it up and have appointed council president?
Oh, yeah, that's a good...
And, and I'm good with just show hands. All right. So, the way that appointing a council president will point is, what I'll do is I'll open nominations. You guys all make nominate, actually, somebody moved to open nominations?
Uh, no, you're too much.
Do I just do it?
I moved to nominate.
All right. Okay, thank you. So, I'm going to open nominations, take the nominations, somebody will move to close the nominations, and then we will vote in order and go round and round till we get somebody with four votes or more. So, the floor is open for nominations.
I move to nominate Jody Ronnie as the council president.
I second that motion.
Yes.
Okay.
Always here.
We're not having a discussion yet. Are there, are there any other nominations, or would somebody like to move to close nominations?
I need to close nominations.
And a second?
Second.
All right. Everybody, I think we're there. So, all of those in favor of appointing Jody Ronnie as the council president, will I do a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
I almost heard everyone.
Congratulations, Jody.
Thanks.
Thank you. The next item is to appoint a planning board member from council to the planning board, and as well now, that is the job of the council to appoint that individual, not the mayor. So, would somebody like to make a motion that we take up that action?
I still move. Second.
Is everybody okay with that? All right. I will open up nominations for a council rep to be appointed to the planning board.
I move to nominate Sandy Conley.
I second.
Do you want to move to close nominations?
I move to close nominations.
I second.
There's a motion on the floor to nominate Sandy Conley as the council rep to the planning board. Roll call, discussion?
I think Sandy, Sandy's got lots of experience there. She's, she's already been on the board for many, many years, and she has been planning board president in the past as well. So, I think it's very important to have someone know, that can hit the ground running. I know she's been attending the meetings even when she wasn't on, I just catched it.
Even on the committee still currently, so, yeah, still very active in the planning board, so, thank you.
If there's no further discussion, we'll do a roll call vote?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right. Next, we need to appoint a representative from the council to the Red Lodge Fire District. I have not found yet where that is, oh, am I assuming library, I'm sorry. Thank you. Wait, did I?
You're a liar.
I, I checked it out there, I searched, I'm sorry. So, library board, is that, that's what I meant to say. So, the library board, I was not able to find their board rules and procedures of how to do that. In absence of that, I'm okay handling that in the same fashion, providing that you guys want to take it up and take action on it tonight.
Who has been the council rep?
Cynthia has been the council rep on that. Are you, so, are you currently the council rep?
Currently, yes.
Do you recall who you were appointed by? Was it just by the mayor with consent of council?
Yes.
Do we know that that's what the bylaws say?
They told me to go to the meeting.
All right, with that, so, so, pardon?
I said, no.
I, I honestly, I need to look into the bylaws.
So, this is one of those opportunities, do we want to discuss tonight if somebody wants to move, or if nobody wants to take it up, say, "Let's wait, do it next time after we confirm"? I'm okay with that as well.
I move to reappoint the council rep for the library board.
So, to take up the action?
Take up the action, no other motion.
I second.
Okay. So, let's have discussion on if we're moving forward with that or not?
I'd like to nominate Cynthia.
All right. All in favor of taking up the action?
There we go.
Coolness. All right, now I will entertain a motion to appoint somebody to the library board.
A motion on top of that one?
Yeah, well, that was a separate thing. Yes, we're going to do it.
Yes, we're going to do it now.
Now, we're going to do it.
Yeah, now you nominate.
Are we doing...
Does that, does that work?
I move to nominate.
There we go.
Yeah, so I guess to nominate somebody.
There's a motion?
I second. If she wants to continue doing it.
It's fine, yeah.
Okay.
All right. Any discussion on that? If, if we find out, and again, I apologize, it just not, has been enough time to research every one of these to find out how it is. If I find out that it needs to be the mayor, I'm happy to reappoint the, the council's choice, choice to make it official. If there's no more discussion...
I move to close nominations.
Thank you.
I second.
Yeah.
That's what we did for the last turkey, so...
Okay, yeah, okay, I'm good with that.
How you had us do that.
That's all right. I'm good, well, I, I do get that, that's how we get for council president, but I've never seen it do that for the board positions themselves, but like I said, we're, we're good. All right. So, was there a second?
There was a second.
All right, and I think we don't actually have to vote on that one, so we're good.
We're just on the others.
So, on, on the, on the closing the nominations, that's...
No, we don't.
No, yeah, we just get it.
Yeah. So, with that, there's a motion to reappoint Cynthia to the library board. Any discussion further? Lonnie?
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right. Do you believe we have a request to appoint somebody to the Red Lodge Rural Fire District Oversight Committee?
I move to take up the appointment.
I second.
All in favor? All right. I'll entertain a motion to, it's actually just to appoint, or we can do it as, if we're appointing this person, or if you want to start with nominations, either way works.
I nominate Kelly Eaton.
I second. Has Kelly been doing that to you?
No.
With Terry.
I did it previously, before Terry, and then Terry did it, and I'm willing to take it back.
I want to hear.
I make a motion to close nominations.
I second that.
All right. Is there any further discussion?
Nope.
All right. Roll, please.
Conley?
Yes.
Daniel?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Eaton?
Yes.
Ronny?
Yes.
Toobin?
Yes.
All right, thank you. So, next on the agenda, and by the way, of the thinking, thinking ahead to our agenda as we look at what the format's going to be, I selected to put this appointment in here before we got to like the standing city action items, just so that people don't have to sit through all that for our presentations. But, we have tonight Brad and Joanne Eater, and they have a presentation that they'd like to, to give us, and I will, and this is specifically on workforce housing, which will sneak up a couple other times before this evening is done. Go ahead, the floor is yours. And if you would, please try to keep your general presentation to 15 minutes and then Q and A, that would be appreciated.
I'm Joanne Eater. I live at Trio One North Ward, at us, and I want to thank you all for putting us on the agenda and for listening to our presentation tonight. We appreciate the opportunity to provide a brief orientation on the involvement of the Red Lodge Area Community Foundation in the critical issue of providing much-needed affordable workforce housing to the Red Loggia. And many of you have been involved in this for a long time. Jody and Sandy have been working on it for many years, and so you probably know even way that better history than I'm going to provide, so you can ask them, ask them that question. So, in all, from the Red Loggia Community Foundation's early community strategy sessions, the need for affordable housing was a top priority. It was one of two or three top priorities that came out of community discussions. As you all know, many employers have unfilled positions because highly qualified applicants who would love to live here can't find a place to live that they can afford. This lack of affordable housing impedes our economic growth and stability. So, over 10 years ago, Red Loggia Community Foundation, as a result of the... So, over 10 years ago, Red Loggia Community Foundation, as a result of the strategic planning that we did, had several convenings to look into this issue. And they had breakfast and we had speakers come from other places to see how they had solved the issue. And so, the breakfast included the people that were already working on housing, again, I think Jody was there on the last meeting, and city people, city staff, and council members. We had a broad cross-section of people that were interested in this topic and then came. And they presented, the people that came to present came from Northern Missoula Community Development Corporation, because they had over 50 homes that they had developed themselves for Missoula, and they had their own community land trust. And so, they were helping a new organization called Trust Montana to take the program of community land trust on a statewide basis, so that communities like Red Lodge or smaller communities wouldn't have to start their own land trust. We investigated that, I think you probably remember some of the discussions, and we asked Bear Tooth RC&amp;D if they would respond to something like a land trust, and they looked into it and they found it just didn't pass out for two or three properties or four properties, that you had to have a quantity in order to make it work. So, these were really great discussions, and just to review what a community land trust is, it's a nonprofit organization that holds land in trust for the purpose of keeping the buildings affordable for the community for the long haul. It's especially valuable in communities like Red Lodge where the land is appreciating dramatically. And so, just the cost of land makes it impossible to develop affordable housing. So, at that time, again, you both worked on this, I know, the city had designated lots on Cooper to be used for affordable housing, and they investigated a lot of different programs that they could use for this. Habitat for Humanity of Carvin County bought three of those lots eventually. The first build that they did was for Jocelyn Lupta, and that became the very first property that was put into Trust Montana as a community land trust. So, Red Lodge made history again, we were the first one in the whole state to do that. So, then in the fall of 2015, Habitat for Humanity Chapter in Carvin County decided to discontinue its work after 20 years. Habitat for Humanity had been an excellent resource in the whole Red Lodge area, they built in Bridger, they built in Roberts, as well as Red Lodge. And they constructed affordable housing every two years, that was their plan. They spent one year organizing, raising money, and the second year they organized volunteers and built a home for one family to gift them out of the market of trying to find a place to live. So, they did a wonderful job. But, since they were closing, the need for affordable housing was still going to be here and there wasn't going to be anybody addressing it. They tried to find partners in Billings, they tried the National Habitat, and they would be happy to take all their assets, but they would not commit to build in Red Lodge or even Carvin County. So, Habitat felt very vulnerable, because the community had donated time and effort and money into accumulating these resources. And so, they came to the Red Loggia Community Foundation, and since we were already interested in the topic of affordable housing, they asked if we would take it over. And we agreed, and part of the agreement was that we used their assets, one of which was one of those Cooper lots, to build another house in Red Lodge. We didn't have to use the Habitat model, we thought, well, we're learning in public, see what we can figure out. And I know both of you helped us with this a lot, and you know the struggle we went through. And we had committed to doing it in two years, well, it took three years, but we were trying to find a simpler way to do it than having to get volunteers, and then you need a construction manager to manage all the volunteers and all the supplies. So, we looked into building a modular home, a really high-quality modular home. We worked with peers in Billings, we designed our own. Let me step back a minute. In order to get going on all of this, the OP&amp;D Edwards Foundation gave a grant to the Red Loggia Community Foundation staff. So, we had a salary for a part-time facilitator, coordinator, and we also got a wonderful Vista worker. So, our first facilitator was Kristen Holm, who did an amazing job, and we had a really amazing Vista worker. Well, anyway, her mother happened to be a trainer for strategic planning and needs assessments. So, her mother kind of held her hand to fill a whole needs assessment, and we still have that needs assessment from 2016 that she developed, looking at housing situation in Carvin County. And so, they worked and the community just worked really, really hard designing the house, figuring out all the details. We had to start from scratch on how to make the documents and how to finance it, and it wasn't easy, so that's why it took three years. So, but we ended up building a really beautiful three-bedroom, two-bath house on Cooper on that lot, and it was really a nice house. But, it cost a lot more than we thought it would cost. Because, and I just heard an article on public radio the other day showing how this model of building a modular house, you've got a high-quality house, it was built in the factory, but you had to transport it. So, when you add on the cost of transporting the house, getting your contractor to put the two pieces together, hooking it up, getting the foundation, it ends up not saving you any money. So, this was the bottom line that the industry came up with, so they're still working on it. We weren't the only ones to figure this out. Okay, but then, we had another problem. So, we had this wonderful house, but we were aiming at workforce, and we wanted to have someone that was between 80 and 120% of AMI. What is that?
Annual median income.
Adjusted median income, okay. But, that particular bracket had very little subsidy from home programs or from loan programs or down payment programs, anything that would help them make it affordable. So, we learned an awful lot by doing that experiment. It's part of our gracious space learning in public, so it was in public. And, but what we learned was, first of all, that the modular didn't necessarily work, right? And that taking the cost of the land out of the equation still did not make it affordable. So, that wasn't enough of a subsidy. I thought it would be, I thought that was the magic bullet, and if you provided the land and you froze its equity, that you would make it more affordable. But, we found, and we had to use some of our resources to subsidize it some more. And I think the people who do kept telling us this, but we had to find out for ourselves. So, that was one thing, we needed extra subsidy. The second thing we learned was that completing the modular home had too many additional costs. And I do want to call out the people that helped us, Adam and Sam Quick and RJ Slavon, they practically gave us their labor at cost. They really knocked off, they didn't charge us the marketing fee at all for helping us, because they wanted to help affordable housing as well. But, still, it was too expensive. But then the third thing was finding a qualified homeowner. So, to find a qualified homeowner that could qualify for a conventional loan and also was within that income bracket, and also would be a pioneer in trying out this new idea of community land trust, where they would own their home but not the land under it. That was quite a challenge, remember? Sandy worked really hard on that. We finally found someone and they're very happy in their home, and it's really a marvelous home, and they did get it for a good price. But, all those, so there we were. We had a great will and we had still some resources, but we had figured out the magic formula. So, enter Helena Habitat for Humanity. So, I happened to get to meet Jacob Kuntz at a meeting, and I was practicing on community land trusts, and he was the ED for the Helena Habitat. And he thought it sounded like a really good idea, because they already found out that once they put all this effort into building a home, getting the family in, life happens. And the family moved or they got other opportunities, and then the house went back on the market at regular market rate. So, it didn't stay affordable after all that investment. And so, he was really excited to hear about this as a tool for keeping all their efforts as affordable housing in their community forever. So, the other nice thing was, he had just applied for and received a rural development grant to develop affordable rural housing in rural communities. Well, Helena is not a rural community, so I said, Red Lodge is. So, that's how our partnership developed. And since then, you've all been to the spires and seen the houses that have been built, and we were, Brad will tell you more about that in a minute. So, the thing that we learned was that in order to create permanent affordability, we needed, one, the trust, the community land trust, the separating of ownership of the land from the buildings on top of the land, two, investing additional subsidies to preserve the affordability of the building, and three, enforcing self-resale restrictions to preserve the affordability long-term. And then Jacob's program was a mutual self-help build, which means that you choose the owners before you build the building, which that solved all of the problems that we found out. So, the grant paid for all their consulting, for their construction manager, for their designing the houses, a lot of the infrastructure was paid by the rural development grant. So, I'll let Brad tell us more about.
Angela's.
I'll be real quick on this. So, we are, have a great partnership with Trust Montana, USDA, other partners, the county's been really good. We hope to have a relationship with the city, because we just feel like that we're all here to do it to the same spot, and that's affordable housing. So, since in the past three years, we, as far as we've been able to build six mutual self-help homes, and we will be having four more that will, they will actually be moving in probably in February. And also, on that same project, we were able to get a CBPG grant for four long-term rentals. And that project should be finished up early summer. And so, we, you know, with our partners, we have made strides. I'm, there's, we have a lot more and we're happy, we invite you to come to our meetings and learn more about our program and what we are doing. I'm going to let Brad talk a little bit more about some other wants.
Real quick, Brad Keaton, Programs Director, Red Loggia Community Foundation, 28th year drive, Red Lodge. The, oh, congratulations on all the new members up there. The surveys that we do in the community, whether it's transportation, childcare, every topic seems to come back to housing. What's needed is means and will to achieve it, affordable workforce housing. The will is there within the community, and the means exists in various forms through House Bill 819 that just passed with revolving grant funds, Lytech credits, and urban renewal districts with the associated TIF financing. So, we have the community will, we have the means in various places, we have to bring it together, and we will need the city's support to do that. So, the ask is that as the urban renewal district matures, that you prioritize affordable housing. And in order to prioritize affordable housing, you have to prioritize land acquisition. It's really as simple as that. The goals that were laid out in the urban renewal district entrance plan lay out housing as the number. We just ask that that's what's the priority, that that's what you move towards as you see that district mature. The last thing I'll say is that we have an opportunity, the Helena Area Habitat is departing this summer after they finish what will be unit number 14 in the last three years of true affordable and workforce housing. There's an opportunity, if we can lay out the vision for the next two to three years, to retain some of that talent in Red Lodge, some of their developers that are willing to stay here and continue to work on that. But, we have a very narrow window to retain that talent. So, I'll ask again that the council helps us to lay out that vision of what the next two to three years of affordable housing will look like, so we can retain the talent to actually deliver the outcome. So, again, thanks for your time. I will turn it over to Martha.
I think we're good.
Oh, you good to close?
I think we're good.
All right, that'll close our presentation.
Thank you. Before we turn them loose altogether, let me just go around the room on this end, Sandy, do you have any questions or comments you want to follow up with?
Well, I've been sitting on the committee meetings for a while, so there wasn't much new there, except that Habitat for Helena Habitat was only until the end of these bills, so that's kind of distressing. And you said that you want to retain the Habitat talent, in other words, the people who've been heading those jobs. How can we as a city help?
If we identify the next location to do mutual self-help approximately for a year, that's how we can retain that team. There will be a USDA grant that would give us enough resources to keep them on board as long as we can deliver four units.
And the URD, I know that the Urban Renewal District was actually focusing on housing, even though it's our community entrance. I don't think they ever discussed land acquisition, and I know that's kind of been one of the goals, if we could get the land, then we would have a really good start, so the Urban Renewal District fund could be used for land acquisition.
Yes, absolutely.
I look forward to hearing what you guys are doing. I mean, I'm really excited to see how much you have done over the past few years.
Big, big credit.
Again, I'm very aware of who has evolved and who's been doing the work, but it's really impressive to see that going that far. And to me, just looking forward to, if there's ways that the city can help, again, being able to have that presentation brought to us, exactly what's required, what's asked, you know, as opposed to just acquiring the land, what land, and how, and again, working with you guys to figure out how we can do that best. So, I look forward to those conversations, because I have a big soft spot in my heart for that. So, yeah, that's kind of where I'm at. And I guess I did have one question, I can't seem to find it, I was going through all your notes earlier, but you know what, I think I will have it, and I can always know who to reach out to, so.
Councilmember Keith?
Yeah, I applaud you guys for all the stuff that you've done. It was really interesting to read that timeline and see how much has happened. I had no idea that 14,000 had been built, so congratulations. And I would love to help support you and your efforts, so I just echo what these two said, and please bring us your needs, and if we can work it out, I'm good for that.
Member Eaton?
I guess nothing really that new to add, just again, thank you for all the hard work that you, that the group has done. This group started working on this about three or four years after we moved to Red Lodge and our. Lodge and I remember being on the periphery through a person who actually is one of, who did one of the self-help housing builds and she and her family are extremely happy there. So, I'd love to continue the work and find ways to partner together so that we can continue to make this a priority for our community because it's really, really important.
Councilmember Ronnie.
I would just reiterate whatever one says. I'm so proud of everything that has been accomplished since I was involved 20, almost 20 years ago. So, me repurposing, the need for it is not a new thing to Red Lodge at all. It's been around for over 20 years where people are constantly, seem to be making just under what they, they need to be able to buy a home. And now, it's not just under anymore. It's like, I don't know anybody that can afford to buy a house in Red Lodge and live selling unexisted property that lives and works here. So, it's more and more, it's very much so important. And I've always been a firm believer that people who work here full-time and want to make Red Lodge their home should have that opportunity. So, I absolutely support what you're doing and look forward to seeing what you, you know, what your asks are.
Member Daniels.
Yeah, there's not much more that I could add because I've already put out there. But yeah, I mean, thank you. I too had no idea that there were that many homes that had been put out there. I know a few and I have, you know, I'm friends with a few of them that were able to take ownership of those. So, it's pretty exciting to see that they're able to do it. Yeah, I mean, I'm excited to see what we can accomplish together.
Thank you all for coming. Joanna, special thank you for you. I know you've had a heck of a two weeks, so I'm happy to see you here and our hearts are with you. By way of information, the community foundation has reached out to give a presentation at our next meeting as well, a short presentation on basically where they think they can help the city and vice versa, just kind of make sure that we have an awareness of what plans they have beyond just the housing stuff. Historically, those of you who've been on here have seen a lot of grants that have come through, that they prepare their grants, find the grants, chase it down, but they have to be orchestrated through the city. So, we're planning on that presentation in two weeks. All right, so as we move on with the rest of our agenda, just a call out that everything here is just discussion only and, and so, no more motions. The, the, some things I said, I did include a copy of the charter in there just that we have as for reference. And then, interestingly enough, so this has been a very educational experience coming in even from, just pop quiz from the community, who is absolutely certain they know when the mayor of Red Lodge takes office? I will give you a hint. If your guess is January 1, you are wrong right along with me and a lot of other people. This year it worked out that way, but it's because it's the first Monday of January. When do you think you should take office? It turns out, or excuse me, I'm sorry, when is it you should be sworn in? According to the rules, you should be sworn in within 10 days of being notified that you've won the election. So, that you're ready to go. Ooh, surprise, right? So, those are, some of those are set by state statute when we start. It's maybe one of those things that if we elect to have a administration and finance, I mean, we may want to look at that regulation because if the first happened to fall on a Tuesday, then that would mean that the new mayor's first day in office was the day before the first meeting. You thought putting an agenda together in one day that you guys were email working on Thursday and the agenda had to go up Friday morning was rough. Another thing that I have nailed my hat to for years, those who have been here, is that I thought when we had members of council committees, the standing committees of council, those should be appointed by the council president. If you look at what we have in our ordinances, which is state law, the last one, or excuse me, our city law, 164, is the mayor shall appoint the members of such standing committees if the council may be necessary. I was wrong. Having said that, it is the job of this body to look at the ordinances that are here and see if there are some changes that we need to make to help make things make more sense. And we can certainly fix that for us and that's not to stop future councils from changing that. But if, for instance, we think that committee appointments should be done by the council president and this body chooses to write an ordinance, which is how we change municipal code and pass that, if we prove that that works, then I think that's more likely to hold going into the future. And then, hand in hand with that is the city rules and procedures. I included a couple of rules and procedures. One of them is the generic one from the book that Dan Clark puts out. They gave some examples. When I was on council, we made some modifications there. An example was that we clarified that the purpose of the city attorney was to provide counsel and limited it that because we were concerned that there was, in fact, a kind of like a de facto veto if the, if the city attorney just said, "No, I don't like it," then it could never get to the council to be operated on. And I know you guys have made some changes and in fact, the one that we printed from online, one of the existing council members reached out to me and said, "That one's actually outdated and if we go back to the minute of February's meeting, there's another copy that's there as well." Not one of those things we have to make a decision of today, but I would like for you guys to, the way that it works, we have another one that kind of ties into the charter. So, a couple of years ago, the question came up and it's come up since and I'm aware about voting and whether folks had to be present to the meeting to be counted as part of the quorum and whether to vote. And the advice we got at that point, I understand there may be a difference in interpretation since then, was that our charter nailed it down and said, "You must be physically present." If it's a change to the charter, we do not have the right to change the charter. That's only the voters. Dan Clark's recommendation was keep generic, keep generic. So, we have state law, which is set by our legislators, then we have a charter, which can overwrite that with certain exceptions, then we have city ordinances, and then we have our rules and procedures, which can be modified. So, right now, one of those examples, the committee appointments, right now it says the mayor, we could change that to counsel, or we could just defer to the rules and procedure, which is you guys just make a resolution and that's a one-time vote. So, lots of things to take into consideration on how to do that. And the good news is, you don't have to make any of those decisions tonight. However, since we're all here together as a group, I would love to open up the table if anybody has any comments or thoughts that they want to add to that conversation going forward.
Well, I know that we have discussed about bringing back at least a work session. Personally, I would like to keep the standing committees in place just because we do get so much work done. Being on admin and finance and I know that land use and planning also has the same thing happen to them. I mean, we had packed one hour, hour and a half meetings constantly that we had to get a lot of work done. But I would like to bring back some type of form of the work session, whether it's under, you know, the other council business under line 14 where we can, or, you know, a committee report where we can discuss what we're doing at our committee meetings and other councils can, you know, voice their opinions and be more informed rather than the committee just all of a sudden presenting the ordinance and say, "Here you go." So, that they do feel like they're getting some input into that, but the committee itself is the, where all the work happens. It's not necessarily where we make our decisions, but you'd be able to get that input from the full council.
Interestingly enough, the version that is in our codified code about how council meetings work was the version that we put in when I was serving on council under Bill. And so, our times don't align with this, but what we did find is, even though this isn't what's codified, that, I just spoke earlier, this is what we found another version of that we need to maybe chase down and make sure our code is updated. So, this is the, this is the city council 1-6-...
What's the date of that one?
This one is from, well, I printed it January 5, 2024. So, this is the date I printed it from the code. But in what's lovely about the codebooks, it goes through and it tells the history of when it was changed and when the ordinances were. All I can tell you is that this version is what was done during the second term of Bill Larson, but my understanding and I believe it was Jody who found the record of that being changed and other ordinance that was done, it's just not reflected in our municipal code. So, we need to get that straightened out. But as we take it on, you guys can set, I know that there has been a sentiment expressed that six, people prefer six o'clock as opposed to waiting until seven. And as I look at this meeting, I confer, but guess what? My book doesn't count on that, right? That's it's you guys who said that. And I, I do know that the last administration, you guys tried it without the standing committees and found it very restricting because the fact of the matter is the work doesn't get done in this one hour. Hopefully, we get very quickly to point that these are very dull and boring and...
We were actually trying it without a work session meeting as well. With just a meeting.
Yeah, and there's, and those, those standing committees are limited to three people, which gives you the freedom to call an ad hoc meeting because you're limited to three people, which does not conflict with sunshine laws and public meeting and notices. But at the same time, what was missing that was an effort to do here, we've got another item, line item you'll notice down below that's kind of going to be open for, for council business for you guys to bring up whatever you want. Our ordinance have always said that the council can force anything to agenda just by making a motion and having it seconded and voted on by four more people. But where did that fit in the agenda? So, one of my goals was to, like I said, to build an agenda that was conducive to the council, being able to do the council's job. And Jody made the suggestion, maybe that's where we could do the reports. And so, what is currently the standing committees could ultimately, these are the action items and then that other council business could be the reports of the work committees, not that we're going to talk about today, but that you have two weeks to worry and research and look at so that when we come back next week. So, it migrates from item 14 on this agenda to item 12, week after week, so.
See, the rules and procedures that I printed out under Part 3, Section 1 meeting, it says that on the second Tuesday each month, a work session starts at six and council meeting at seven. Is there, is there a newer one than that?
There, yeah.
But is this not aligned?
Yeah, so, so this is, this is actually the ordinances that do that. There is a newer version that we've discovered that's not, I've mentioned it's been a really exciting week, right?
A trigger, really.
It is.
Because I pulled all the, yeah, I, yeah, okay. So, there, so this is, doesn't count at all.
Here, I can, I can read this out of, well, not the whole thing, but, so this is something that we did, Jody was speaking about this, and this is what we did as a council last March.
Yeah, it was like...
Or it's 762 if you want to make a call.
762, it's the Second Amendment of ordinance 762. And basically, it was the mayor and the council members' desire to modify the meeting schedule, eliminating the separation of the work session and council business meeting to improve efficiency. So, we amended the Section 136A to read, "The regular meeting for the transaction for city business shall be held on the second and fourth Tuesday of each month. Each meeting shall begin at six and include a work session if necessary. The work session shall not exceed one hour and no meeting shall coincide later than 8:00 p.m. without council approval, bless you." So, that, that is the updated one that's in effect right now.
It's just not reflected in our code and I know the guy who's responsible for making sure that gets fixed.
And I just would like to say that, echo what Jody said, that I think having the standing committees is really important and it is where all of the work happens, right? Then we come here and we talk about it and we have, you know, ordinances and things that we bring forward for discussion and vote. And I, and I don't think, I experienced, we both experienced when we didn't have that, it just didn't work. There wasn't, there wasn't an impetus to do the work, to create the work with a smaller group of people and bring it forward. I would also, I also support what Jody said about having more of a discussion about what you're doing in, in your committee so that everyone at the table is aware of what's going on, aside from just the things that are brought to the agenda for action.
Before it becomes action.
Right, yeah. Or even if it's not, even if it's just something that we were, we've been talking about and then we decide, and then there, there wasn't much support to move it forward. People should know that too, that we, that we were talking about something and that...
Right.
And just get the input.
Having attended many of those meetings, many of those small committee meetings, the things I liked about it is that the public could have a Q and A with the members. My problem was then that was during the day and then that evening, the summary of it was so brief, it didn't reflect truly what happened in that committee meeting. So, and the meeting then it didn't either. I mean, they were very abbreviated and summarized therefore, but I think that there were things brought up in the committee meetings that never made it to the city council. And that's why I was kind of hoping that we could go back to a work session where all six of us were at the work session and the community could talk to each of us. I know that it's a bigger time commitment, but when you think about it, you've already spent an hour and a half during the same day as the meeting. So, whether it's right before the meeting or at nine o'clock in the morning, it doesn't, it doesn't change the amount of time spent, but I think it gives the public an opportunity to sit in on the full discussion, not just a summary of. And that's why I was kind of hoping we could go back to the work session before the city council meeting.
In addition to committee, in the committee?
No.
So, so there's really four hours of committee meeting.
I know.
So, there's, that's where the time constraint of a work session, of an hour work session meeting will not cover everything that we do in the standing committees. That's my feeling anyway.
I was going to raise my hand, but I guess I'm the, Dave, I call on me. One of my concerns, and then again, I'm just partaking in the discussion, of having the work meeting before the meeting is when we did it, the initial problem was we set it to start at seven and then, or at six and then the council meeting was at seven. Well, if that meeting was over in 30 minutes, everybody was twiddling their thumbs for a half an hour and it didn't work. So, then this version of it came out and said, "We'll have a work session, not to exceed, but as soon as it's done, then the council meeting starts," which is where the action is. And my concern with that was people who want to just come to the council meeting, they don't know what time to show up or what time to be there, and I think that's important. The idea that Jody floated earlier that, that once we do the action items, which is where the public is coming, if then we have that work session, here's what we talked about in our meetings today that's going to be on the next agenda for action, does that, does that meet both of those needs that you have?
I think that helps. I just want to make sure that the public gets a chance to sit in on those committee meetings and I know that they can't spend all day Tuesday here. And so, it's nice to put it in a block of time. And, you know, the odds that we're going to have a work session that would last a half an hour is probably not. And I'm sure that nobody would mind spending a half an hour talking with everyone one-on-one as well. I find it hard to believe that, that we're going to have trouble cutting it off for the city council meeting at seven, more than anything else. And if it has to roll over to the next city council meeting, then it rolls over.
So, my thought is kind of a combination of the two. I agree with the fact that I want to have the community more involved in those conversations and making it 9:00 a.m., 10:00 a.m. So, that's not always feasible for people within our community, especially it's like, "Okay, I'm the person that works tonight, so I can show up for the day one, but now I'm not at the council meeting." So, trying to be a little bit more flexible with that, I think is very beneficial, but I think more so...
But I think more so, I'm, I am all about having small work sessions. But as long as everybody that's here gets that full breadth of what that is, and I'm not sure if that means moving it to a different day of the week or, again, kind of talking about, we have this work session, we present it, we have the discussions on it, people here at the table be like, hey, can I get some further clarification on this? I would like to ask questions on that. Can you go back and look at this piece of it, those types of aspects? And also the community gets that opportunity to speak on that as well in two different sessions now. It doesn't get quite the same Q and A, but I would also, why not just have the Q and A during that discussion with the community, with the people here? Where we have essentially, we do our business, I think it's good to get our business out of the way, we open up to, instead of starting with those subcommittee meetings, we start with the other pieces and then move into that. And then we actually open it up for public discussion. And it might be that we only get to feature two of the four meetings. Maybe we do that where it's Tuesdays and is land use and planning and, you know, or the first Tuesday of the month and the se- third Tuesday of the month, or fourth Tuesday of the month is financing. Yeah. So I don't, I don't know how that looks exactly, but I like the idea of just broadening it and stretching it a little bit to where we have these bigger discussions like this, have that opportunity where someone raised a hand graciously, we can call on them, we can ask people in the room. And then it comes back to the next meeting that actually is an actionable item, to where we get all this feedback, it goes back to that small meeting in the morning, comes back to the, the actual table, and that becomes actionable. And the big thing too is, again, it gives you a chance to resonate because from sitting here, one of the number one things I heard is people felt like they were getting all this information sprung on them and didn't have time to process it before it was actually actionable or have a chance to do the research, ask questions, et cetera. So just maybe like, again, I know it sucks because we want to be really efficient and effective, but at the same time, it's better to be really thorough in my mind, so.
And I think it's ultimately quicker to do it right than to try to rush into it sometimes. That, that has been my experience from friends that have served in special forces. Like I said, that's slow as smooth, smooth as fast. I find myself falling back on that when I'm doing something. I'll try to tie it on in a hurry, it doesn't work.
Right. So again, not exactly sure how it looks at this point, but I love the idea of maybe we can bring ideas to each other next week of like, what would you like to see? What has worked for you guys? Because you obviously are doing this. And how can we improve on it while also being as efficient as we can?
I do know from experience that there's a lot of stuff that we do in the standing committees that really is more, you know, like, let's say, the recycling center, how can we better improve the recycling center for keeping track of people who are going through there, that type of thing. So we're doing a lot of like research in the background, like, you know, you, you know, Jody, you go and investigate and see if there's any apps out there that we can use to help, you know, do that type of stuff. Or here's the sustainability board coming to public works and they want to implement this, this, and this. And, you know, just public works then go out and they look for grant opportunities. So it's not really just like we're sitting down and discussing actionable items.
Sure.
It's more like helping to support that department, you know, and what they can do. Like, I know Kelly did some research in public safety on grant opportunities, things like that. So, you know, not all of that would necessarily go through a work session, where that's where the standing committees are really great about that. There are definitely things that we discussed that we brought forward as a discussion item. I really am a hundred percent for having it be a discussion item before it's actionable, especially in admin and finance when we were setting fees or different things, you know, and we took into consideration what, what people said, you know, and then we did have a lot of participation from, you know, when we were setting the business owner fees, from the business owners that came, you know, or sent us emails or, you know, came and discussed it. So I, I think a hybrid would be really great because, I mean, a lot of what we do would absolutely bore people.
Sure. I guess, I'm, I'm all about being a nitty gritty when it's appropriate.
Right.
But just making sure that at this table, we get a really thorough understanding of what's happening in those morning sessions. I think that.
Absolutely.
I actually, oh, no, okay. I, I was just waiting, you guys are done for sure. I think that we, with, with the standing committees, I feel like in my experience that the whole being, things being sprung on you and was actually much better with a standing committee.
Was it?
Yeah. Like I, I mean, yes, you only have two of them, right? So there's two that you are not as heavily involved in, but I feel like it did help bring things for discussion first. And I feel like we got better at that of, of not saying like, oh, this is action. It was always, we got to a good spot of, we were always going to discuss this first. I think in most cases, we did that. I'm looking at some.
Yeah.
That makes the trick of how, how we carry that discussion from the three to the six.
Right.
Before it's sprung for action.
Right. Absolutely. Right. And I think, yeah, this hybrid maybe that we're talking about where we do have standing committees, because that's one thing too, that when, like you were saying, Jody, when you were talking about the research, like I remembered when we just had the work session and we didn't have standing committees, nobody, there was nobody, like, nobody had assigned anything, nobody was doing that, right? So it was like, who was doing that?
Yeah.
Right? And so the standing committees really helped those, those groups say, okay, what are the things that we need to research, think about, you know, bring to the, bring to the table, to this big table? And without those, I'm, I'm scared that we go back to like, not really doing. Yeah, no, I'm all about having the, the morning committees, just as long as we're fully discussing here at the table. Yeah, those are the standing committees, so. And then I, I think a hybrid would be really great, that maybe the work session, that's the hour before, is just simply the, the public being able to, like us talking about what we did in our committees, like report out to committees and then the public being able to ask those questions. Yeah, I love that. And I love the idea of the open communication back and forth.
Yeah.
In that work session. That's the number one thing I would love to see captured and for any bit that we do is I think that there's a lot of people that they, this is the time that they can dedicate and, and I, as much as I would love to be making it to more of those meetings in the mornings, I just, there's, you know, we got jobs too and, you know, we all do our best.
And you can, you can do stuff as part of a standing committee, not necessarily limited to those time blocks either.
Right.
Your homework.
Yep. And that's, that's fabulous. So again, to me, that's a way to help get people involved and also.
In, in the interest of time, council member Daniels, do you have anything you want to add?
No, I, I agree with the hybrid version, especially in the sense like I was on a couple committees where there really wasn't a lot happening, you know? And so I kind of felt like there were times where I just twiddled my thumbs and then all of a sudden I'd show up to the meeting and, you know, all these other committees were throwing stuff out and I'm like, oh, wow, you guys are super busy, you know? So if we could have a little bit more of a discussion prior before, so I know it was, you know.
I, I'd like to add that because I had the converse, I was on the two busiest committees. Yeah. And so it was a, it was a lot. And there were two of us, Jen Battles and I, that were both on finance and land needs and planning. And I think if there is a, a better spreading out of.
Distribution?
Distribution of, of, you know, being on one busy committee and one not so busy committee for all of us.
Yeah.
I think that would be, you'd have, you'd at least be in the know for the very nitty gritty details of one of those.
I, I look forward very much to seeing how your council president wrangles you together to your own consent is here. Two things, one, as you have those conversations, make sure that you don't exceed three members at a time for, unless it's a, unless it's a, an organized meeting. And then I have a specific question on the one dash six dash four, which where it says, "The mayor shall appoint the members of such standing committees as the council may deem necessary." So the way I read that is the council says, these are the committees we're going to have. And I think those are somewhat traditional, those one shift about fifteen years ago or twenty years ago, that was, it was, it used to be just emergency services and I think it changed to public health and safety twelve or fifteen years ago. But then this says, "The mayor shall appoint." Is the feeling of this council that you guys would like to change that to have that be the council president appoint? We need to do that via ordinance to make it happen, but we can get around it. If that's the direction you guys tell me you think you want to go, then what I will do is have the council president tell me which appointments I am making and then we follow through on the paperwork. But just a quick scroll, well, let me start on this side because it's more experience on this side. Would you rather have the mayor or the council president make those appointments?
I feel like the council president has kind of an understanding, seeing that she participates in a lot of the meetings and she understands, you know, personality wise and where people would fit.
Okay. Council member, Ronnie?
I would like it changed to the council president, mainly just because I feel they're council committees and I feel the council should choose who they want on their committees.
Council member.
Um.
This is just discussion.
Yeah, honestly, I just see it at six, one half dozen and another, honestly, because I feel as a mayor, you would want to consult with the, the council president to make sure that you're appointing the members in the correct committees. So for me, I'm just like apples, apples. Yeah. I think either way, the mayor and the council president should be talking about it.
Okay.
In the interest of saving time and not waiting two weeks to make an ordinance change.
Oh, no, 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 no. I, I, I could, you tell me how you want it to end up and we'll make it work in the meantime.
Well, I would say that you take Jody's advice under advisement and make those agreements. She said what she felt you.
Yeah, I basically think that, because it's not just council president making that decision, generally that's going to be a reflection of what the whole council believes. So, and I think that we will all do the work together to figure out who works in the best position.
Council president.
So what I will look for, what I will anticipate is at the next meeting, at very, very on the action items, the mayor will appoint the members of the standing committees. I will do that in consultation with the council president and then, then, then we can, then we'll have a, an administration and finance committee that can determine whether we, as we're revisiting this and talking about the time and stuff. The other thing to remember as you get into those work sessions, by the way, the fact that there were no times in work sessions on this for the public was just because we didn't really have, know who was on, on councils and we didn't have any action items. So I anticipate in the future that those will be there and I will work with the council president to do that. And then like I said, revisit this and think, what do we want to change in here for the meeting you guys are talking about? Again, it's not an immediate thing. But then the second version of that is, do we make this less generic so that it has the flexibility for the rules of procedure? Because that, that's a, a one-time resolution. So it's just at what point you install the control.
W W C C. Be general in your.
Yeah. You said be general higher up and drill down, further down.
And I agree with that.
And, 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 and we've got situations where we're stuck dealing with the fact that it was specific higher up and, and, and we've seen, we've seen where that's caused some confusion. Yeah. All right. The next two are introductions, and that was a recommendation I got from one of the council members, that if we have these topics, that it was kind of like, without context of this discussion, oh no, what are we doing with this? So I think I can put that on the agenda as introduction two. And I will use that to move into our next one, which is the Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary MOU. So we have a copy of the MOU that is there. My understanding, having talked to both sides of, of meeting, representatives from the city, representatives from the wildlife sanctuary, is that there was a point where they thought they were really close or even all on the same page in the discussion, but then it wasn't reflected in the MOU. My understanding of, of how this should work is that council would direct the mayor to basically, and it's not even, it's directed, but as the mayor, if I go out and negotiate a contract, ultimately, that has to be approved by you. That tells me I want the direction of council before I go out to negotiate that contract. What are the things that you want to see? This is a similar frustration as we saw reflected in feedback from the planning board that they felt they were working on things and then it came to the council and it got shut down and the council was like, we didn't know you were working on that, we didn't get a chance to offer direction on that. So with that in mind, I would, it's not really a, I guess it's still a motion, but I would entertain, entertain a motion that, that says, mayor, go work out a, a contract on this. And by the way, these are the things we want you to look at. Because to me, I look at it, basically what I think is, if I was on council, if I put my council shoes on, the questions I'm going to ask are, is the city happy? Has the city signed off on this? Has the wildlife sanctuary signed up on this? Has the city attorney signed off on that? Great, my job is now easy. But with that in mind, it'll be easier to get to that endpoint if the council offers its thoughts or directions about what concerns need to be taken into account.
I still vote.
Ten seconds.
Do you guys, do you guys want to give any directions or things that you are aware from the conversations you've been in?
Well, Kelly and Chris, I think we're involved in, in, in the actual meeting.
And, Chris, me if I'm wrong, but the last land needs and planning meeting that we had, and BR was there, there was one point that they were still discussing from what I understood. And so.
Right, and then Courtney left.
Right. So to our knowledge.
BR, do you want to come up to the podium, please?
If that one issue has been resolved, then I think Chris Knight are happy to.
And you asked us to not vote on it the last meeting.
Right.
Because you weren't ready.
The board needed to look at it.
And, and one of the concerns, as I understood it, was that what we have printed didn't match the discussion. BR?
I'm BR Walker, executive director of Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary. I reside in Red Lodge, Montana now, not in a fifth wheel and bail free. And I would like to thank y'all for showing up and coming in and being so dedicated to Red Lodge because we are an organization that was born here, developed here, wants to stay here, and we depend on your leadership. So thank you. With that said, I want to tell you that we did a lot of work last year, getting the sanctuary all revved up and momentum going, and it was fabulous for the community. We worked with the city council and with the mayor to come to some understandings about things that had just been on verbal agreements in the past. We came so close. The year seemed so long until the last month, which went by in thirty-three seconds. That was when I got in my car to go to Mississippi and for the holidays and I heard that we were on the agenda and I had not seen the final copy of the MOU. So my apologies for leaving town, but I needed to see my family. So when I got it, I could only read it on the phone and, because it's a three-day drive home. So I had not been able to talk with the board and get a final okay. And we did ask that the board, that the council wait on seeing the agenda items and voting on it. With that said, I have complete faith that moving forward, this council and this mayor will look at our issues, and I have provided the mayor with a list of the things that are resolved and the things that are not resolved and where we need to go and the discussion that's needed. Our hope is, of course, is to get everything that we want, but our primary desire is that we become an element that is a fantastic contributor to the city of Red Lodge. So knowing that that's our motivation, we hope that you will consider things seriously and sincerely for us. Thank you.
BR, can I ask a question?
We, we can ask you to.
I'm sorry, I forgot, I'm not in charge. The MOU that is in the packet for this council meeting, is this to your satisfaction or the board and for, for you and the Yellowstone Wildlife Sanctuary board?
Have, have you had a chance to look at what's in the packet?
There is an issue with whether or not we have time for a plan or whether the plan will be, there are just some issues that aren't quite there in language.
This is on the Bison Yard?
Yes. I didn't want to bring it up, but you did.
Well, please do. Yeah, that's what we're here. We gotta, we're trying to parse out.
If I could describe it to you. We have. In fact, to describe it to you, we have had a verbal agreement with the city for a hundred years, well, not a hundred, just forty, um, on the bison area. And that was that we would not put any buildings, and we won't, because there's infrastructure underneath the bison yard that the city needs access to, uh, if there's an emergency. We understand that.
At, at the drop of a hat.
Yes, yes. And, um, so, we're in a position that if you needed access, we would get it for you if we have to move the bison to the other area of our yard that's not in the area. The problem is, is that the perimeter fence is on what was referred to as city easement in the past. Um, there's now, um... A perimeter fence that provides a buffer from the public. That is a USDA requirement for safety and so on. Um, there's also a USDA requirement that if the perimeter fence is located in one spot, it must come, uh, the enclosure must come in five feet from it to ensure that there is double safety. So what happens is, if we have to move the fence to the property line, we also have to move the enclosure in five feet more, which leaves us with enough for snakes, uh, exactly, rabbits, maybe. So, um, we do not have any other area that could be purpose for bison. Uh, we believe that bison are a draw to Red Lodge. We think that they are a necessary education message because people are going into Yellowstone all the time getting charged by bison. We want people to see them safely, and we want them to know they are a tough animal. Look at this sucker, weighs this many pounds. Um, yes.
So, so one of my concerns, guys, is what I don't want to do is, is, is turn our council meetings into where all the work happens. Like I said, I want this to be the boring part where we just all come sign off and agreed on. BR mentioned that she had sent me an email, a table of, these are the things that we've talked about that we think are resolved or unresolved. Um, my response to her was, I will be happy to pick up this conversation, but I'm going to hold off and wait and bring this to council and basically wait until I have direction from council so that I don't go do something that's not in line. Ultimately, it has to come back to you guys for approval. You guys approve it, I do not. When it gets signed, you guys make a motion that authorizes the mayor to sign agreement X. And so, basically what I did is, is I'm, I'm looking at, like I said, there's, there's some rough edges on this meeting. I'm not, I'm going to be the first one to say that. But what I'm hoping to establish right off the bat is, is I'm working to, to, to build that trust back where we can do things, kind of the way it's prescribed in the, in our charter specifically. Um, one of the things I, that, that's not done is, is an org chart, which guess what? Has the, the, the council members on top, and then the mayor reporting to the council collectively, not, not to Sandy, not to Chelsea, but to the council collectively. Um, but, but then there's certain roles and duties that are there. So like I said, I'm, I'm, I was happy to take that up, but it was my feeling, it doesn't do me any good to come sit down and negotiate those things without having the guidance and direction of council of what you want to look at. And then I'm hearing right now that we've got two council members that were involved, um, that, that certainly I need to take guidance and direction from. Um, but, but looking at this as, as a specific issue, but kind of more of a procedural thing of moving forward, how would you guys like to proceed?
I, I just want to ask BR one question.
Okay.
Um, when you're talking about the buffalo enclosure, um, you know, there's the, the fence by the recycling center, and there has been talk about expanding the recycling center. I just couldn't hear you.
That has been resolved. The beds on the northwest, we have even gotten a grant to pay for the fencing. So it is a matter of collaborating with the city on exactly where that fence goes, so we don't ever talk about it again.
So that won't impact your, your future of the buffalo?
No, that, that has, no.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to clarify a question on that.
Again, to not get into the entire thing.
Yep, no, perfect.
I trust y'all to explore it.
Is there any timeframe on this that we have to rush through this?
My, my understanding is that they have several grants to build several buildings when spring hits. So we need this resolved in a timely fashion so that they can build when the ground thaws. But I fall back on, when you try to kind of not in a hurry, it doesn't work. So, so let's, let's slow it smooth, as smooth as fast, so that we can have them done by March, you know, maybe eight, yeah. It's going to take a couple of cycles, because what I don't want to do is spring, like I said, if, we will have reviewed what it is so that we know at the next meeting, yes, we're, we've read it, I approve. That, that's kind of what I'm hoping to lead us toward.
And we are looking for the building season to have an answer. If the bison yard is not resolved by building season, we can't build.
So the only thing I would like to see done from mayor aspect is that obviously connect with Chris and Kelly. They've been working on it, sounds like we're fairly close. It sounds like there's something that needs to be resolved with you. Likely that means that there's something that's not resolved with the city. So it's going to be that conversation between the two of what are your needs, what are their needs? How do we find somewhere on middle ground? And it sounds like they've done a lot of the late work, so work with them, figure out where the, where the ball's dropped, and not where the ball's dropped, but where the missing pieces are, where the missing fence line is.
Here we have asked them to do the concerns and the emails.
Absolutely, yeah, absolutely.
And I have a really good map, too, that I think would be helpful.
And then talk to them with Eric, it sounds like there's some GIS codes and some heavy-duty computer backend work that they need to be brought in, too. We'll wind it there. Do you have any additional thoughts or comments? So just, so, um, I don't know that it requires a vote, it's just, I, I will take the direction, yes, to work on this, that I'm going to work with Kelly and Chris and make sure we're not duplicating efforts. And then among that, I'm going to start by sharing that spreadsheet with you then. Is that correct? BR, is there anything else you wanted to add?
Just want to thank you.
Thank you. All right. The next one, um, I'm sorry, we're going to have to listen to me a little bit. Um, is, uh, we had, one of those big pebbles in the shoe as we went through here order-wise, is there was a petition for, um, there was a petition for a de-annexation, um, that was dropped off in November, and through a little bit of confusion, um, it ended up not having action. Theoretically, we're supposed to take action within ten days. Um, Lonnie had chased down the MCA code, so we went ahead and included in the packet. It basically talks about what the process is. Basically, there's an initial petition, and it, and there's a resolution of intent, which this body does, it's posted for twenty days, and then there's a, a final resolution that grants that after the twenty days has occurred and there's been a period. Um, that sounds like a lot of process and stuff, so again, I didn't want to spring it on you guys today. I talked to both of the landowners that are involved in this, I'll swing that process in just a moment. Um, but, again, the goal here is to establish, is, is to do kind of the homework so that the next meeting, when we take this up for action, is really boring. If you look, um, if you guys have the map that's there, this is Cole Avenue that comes up here. What happens, and then this is the highway that's on the right. So what happens is, on that map, you will see something, sale, spring, creek that's there. What you do not see is that there is a road that is on a piece of land right there. It di, it, it dissects that land, basically turns it into pieces of land for practical use purposes. So there's an, there's an issue called easement by prescription, which by the way, is something that we will also be dealing with, with the, with the YWS that we'll need to take into account. That basically says, if you've been doing something for twenty-one years, I think, is it twenty-one in Montana?
I don't remember.
Some, somewhere in that vicinity. That basically what happens is, it's not automatic, but you go to a judge and a chance, a, a judge grants an easement by prescription that says they've been doing this for twenty years, they get to keep doing it. So in this particular situation, what happens is the two landowners have talked, because the landowner who uses the road accesses county land on the top half of the map. So what happened is, as they've gone to mediation and talked about it, they came up with a, a, a mutually acceptable agreement. I've talked to both of them, so I can, I can vouch for that, which to me is great that the city gets to basically help resolve this issue. And what they've done is, landowner A, who owns all of the land, with the exception of a little square piece in the bottom which is owned by the mountain, is going to chop off the west end of it and deed that to landowner B, who in turn will put his road on that little skinny stretch of road and therefore abandon his road. And now landowner, landowner A actually has a piece of land that's big enough that he can do something with. It has an increased value, he can sell it. So that's kind of the objective of, of what is there. So the, the issues that come into play is, so landowner B, the, that, that landowner A wants to give him a little piece of land for, um, is, all his land is in the county. So to give him a small piece of land that's basically a half an acre, if you look at that L, it's undeveloped land, it's not a great tax value to the, to the city. Um, and what he would like to do is de-annex that and be able to join it with his county land. And even there's a, a potential building spot right on the border there, but you can't build a house half in the city, half in the county. What we get, so, so to me, if I go through the little sheet that I used when I was on city council, what the argument's for, what the argument's against, one of the arguments is, oh, we're giving up, and, and by the way, this is all county land around here, which is part of the other requirements there, we're giving up tax revenue on a half an acre of undeveloped land. On the flip side, what we get out of it is we have a parcel of currently undeveloped land that may in the future be developed land, which could actually bring in a whole lot more revenue.
Will it be city land, though?
This, this, no, this will be city land. The only de-annexation is this little L right here that is, so it's got, there's a couple of things that have to happen before this. And I think what they're doing is they're just waiting for the, the blessing of, of council to proceed with this so that they do it once. You can't give half a piece of land to somebody. So you have to do a survey and do a boundary reassignment so that you now have two pieces of land, and then you give away that piece of land, and it's that piece of land that's being given away that they want to de-annex and join in with the county. The remaining piece stays in the city, will be part of the city, and potentially is a much more valuable piece of property and a developable, develop, what's the word?
Developable?
It's a piece of property that can be developed. When in doubt, reword. So, so that's a very high-level overview, just so we, what, our next step is a resolution of intent to, to de-annex. But with that, let me pause, and then, do we have either of those, the parties here today, they were?
Beug and Langless.
Beug and Langless, and, and actually the, the, uh, the, uh, uh, survey company was, was going to be here as well.
Which one?
Um, it, the, the, uh, resident survey unit? Um, um, don't, don't, don't quote me on that, but, so... Yeah, there we go. And, and, and it's on the, on, on the paper there, so...
Okay.
So I'd like to move forward, but again, I didn't want to spring anything on here. Particularly, this is one of those things, I, if I were on council, I would want to go do some homework and research and have a couple of weeks to search through before it showed up expecting action. So that's why it's there tonight. Andy?
Were you talking to your?
Let me try, yeah. Councilmember Conley.
You, you talked to Beug, and you talked to Langless, and you talked to anybody from, uh, the mountain?
Um, I did not talk directly to them, but it is my understanding from all three parties that I did speak to that they are completely on board and have no objections, because this doesn't affect them in any way, shape, or form.
Except for...
It might.
Okay.
What if, what if you...
They, they blessed the road.
It's more so the, I was worried more about HOA and just making sure that their HOA and their bylaws are okay with that kind of thing.
The use of that land, I don't know what that, my answer is.
That would be the only thing, it's, I mean, it's potentially...
Yes, that, that, so my understanding, but again, that's why we're having this conversation, so we've got two weeks to answer all these questions, right?
Yep, exactly, that'd be the only thing, is I think it'd be nice to reject the HOA president.
How are they currently using that people land?
It has not been used in any way, shape, or form.
They can, but, yeah.
None of the three...
Right now, but what does it say in the plat and how it could be used?
It's a single family.
Is it a single family? See, that's where it's... Yeah, it might be a single-family lot, and that's the concern here is, is we could be creating something where there's cows wandering onto that land unless it's fenced, or they would have to fence it, or is it currently fenced? Those are the kind of questions that I'd be asking. Is that land currently fenced? Do they have a problem with, you know, cows wandering onto that piece? And, and is it valuable without cows?
I'm glad we have two weeks to discuss this before, for you guys to work this through, before we have to make any actions on that.
The other thing is, reading through your Montana code annotated, uh, it says in the petition, it's in the best interest of the city or town and the inhabitants, and will not materially mar the cemetery of the city or town. It does make kind of a weird...
The interpretation that I got on cemetery is basically, you can't, like, take a chunk out of it. This is, this is regrowing an edge.
Right.
And then, so it's not pretty, it's not squares, but that's something you can take into account. Are, are we there and, and you can research further on that?
Supporters, if I'm not wrong.
Of course, anyway.
It's not taking out of the middle.
Yeah.
It would be kind of weird if it just goes and, you know, the...
I wouldn't lose sleep over it personally, but...
So, so my, my, my thoughts are, wonderful questions, and this is why we're having the conversation and not taking action on it tonight.
Yeah, see, and I just want to say that, you know, when you drive down Cole Drive and you see that road going back into Dr. Beug's property, it looks kind of funky, because it's like this county road going through the golf course.
Except it's not a county road, it's a private road.
I know, I know, but it looks like you're going back to a farm.
It's a little out of place.
It's out of place, you know, and then this other entrance is off Highway seventy-eight. And I just think that it would actually improve the golf course personally, because then Langless would own all of that. I mean, that road, they already own it, but the road would go away, and they could build on it.
And we can certainly, we can certainly, um, we can certainly request that they're here, and I would think if we have a, if we have a res, if, if we get to a point of a resolution of action at the next meeting, I think it would appropriate for them to be there.
Yeah, absolutely.
Um, and, and, uh, and, uh, I will take, I had talked to both of them and, 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 uh, I, I thought it was understood, uh, by at least one of them, that, that, that it was preferred that they be here to answer questions, kind of like we did with BR. But I will take the ownership of that not being clearly communicated by the fact that none of them are here. So, um...
They're not online at all. Make sure.
Oh, are they, they online? There might be. There's a lot of people online. They're holding very, very still. Victoria's not even playing. All right, any, any other questions or thought, or how we proceed with this?
The only questions I would have is, neighboring lot with golf course, talking to the golf course pres, or the HOA president, and then also just reaching out to the county and make sure that they have all the projects in a row through that course as well. I mean, we're all on kind of a similar...
And, and I have done some of that, because it was actually a little bit of a question when we were looking at, we were looking at a tax statement that, that didn't have city taxes on it. We were wondering if we were looking at the correct law. I have since caught back. Uh, for those who may be interested, cadastral lies.
Oh, yeah.
Um, it, "Cadastral is not the Bible," end quote was the, was the language that I got. So, so here's, here's my thinking. Given that the next action on this is actually a resolution of intent, what I would like to do is, for now defer this to the council president, who will direct it towards the correct, um, committee as those committees get formed. Are you good with that? Are you guys all right meeting with, as committees, next time, even given that we won't have formally announced that yet?
Yeah. Okay.
Yeah.
Okay. Let's get the rubber on the road.
Can you repeat exactly what you want me to...
So on this item, the next, the next action is basically a resolution of intent, which is, uh, is a council item, not a, not a executive branch item. And so, um, I will get and work with you, but you can work with the folks who have rubber on the appropriate committee and, and you can start picking it up and working with this. We, I, I will help orchestrate working with the city attorney.
So the resolution of intent, we just say the city of Red Lodge has the intent, is fine with it? Has the intent of the action?
I'm going to let you read the code and determine what the resolution of intent needs to say.
Okay.
It's in the area.
All right. Any comments, other comments or questions on that before we move on? All right. Um, the next thing, which is, uh, informational only, is the left service line inventory. So, before eight o'clock on my first day, I learned that we had a letter that was three pages long being sent out to all the residents of, of Red Lodge. Please go into your basement and find this. Um, as we looked at that, we said, we need to get ahead of this a little bit. Um, yesterday morning, um, we invited the, the paper in, and we have Eric and Danae, and they had a little half-hour interview, and there will be a story running... Um, yesterday morning, um, we invited the, the paper in, and we have Eric and Danae, and they had a little half hour interview, and there will be a story running on Thursday's paper. Kind of talking about this process a little bit more. Um, most important thing is that made the packet look big, right?
It was big enough already.
Yeah.
But, so, so this, this is an informational thing only, um, that, from, from a, from a mayor's report, what is happening is, um, the city is doing everything they can to help facilitate, facilitate users providing that information, including right now, they are calling and can schedule, um, some additional assistance on Wednesday, Thursday, Fridays, or Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursdays, for a four hour block, and if that time doesn't work, we'll make other, other arrangements for them. So mostly it's just an informational thing to let you know that that is happening, um, on the mayor's side of the fence, and I'm just letting you guys know. Questions, comments?
I'm assuming we'll get a little bit more information from the Public Works Director on this as well.
So, um, I think most of what, so, so, the, the, the answer, the answer on that a little bit is, that's limited, because this is the federal government, which means it's a work in process, so the ground is going to change many times, very slowly, over the next several years. So all we're doing is collecting the first round of information that they are requesting from us. Basically, what they want to do is make sure Flint, Michigan doesn't happen again. And so they are, they have, uh, prescribed an edict that we're going, the first step is just getting an inventory of how many lead lines are there. Um, by way of information, it'll be reflected in the art tomorrow as well. Um, lead line stopped being allowed in nineteen eighty-eight, so if you're in a home that's newer than nineteen eighty-eight, guess what, you don't have lead line. Um, so that was some, some additional information there. Um, but mostly that's just all that is, is just, it's something that's happening, you guys may get questions on it. Um, and I will keep you posted in, in my responsibility to report to council as requested or as appropriate, and so that's all that is there.
Yeah, I opened mine today, I got them. I did mine.
Did you?
I opened it, but I have absolutely no intention of doing it until the temperature's warm up.
So it's, it's inside your house, you know, not outside?
Well.
This is the basement.
No, so, so your meter. Oh, there you go, yeah, because your meter has to be in a conditioned state so that it doesn't breathe. So.
And is it, is it true that the, um, citizens can call the city to?
Absolutely, we will come and do that, yeah, so you can. That, that is, I believe, is, basically they call the front office and they schedule it, it's in the letter, and it'll also be in the newspaper on Thursday.
But I like that, is it nineteen eighty-eight or?
Nineteen eighty-nine or later, newer?
Don't worry about it.
Well, so, so they still need, they still need the information, so, so from a, from a, from a process standpoint, there's two different authorized declaries, declaries, or whatever, however you want to do it. I don't know if it's a declaration, but I can go there. Um, but it's, uh, the water service manager for the city who holds, like, all sorts of certifications can declare that it's not led, or the homeowner can declare that it's not led. So even if we go out and help the homeowner do it, they are in essence making the declaration from that standpoint. Did I extend the question property, and did that answer it?
No.
Okay.
I'm curious if some of these preliminary records for review have been already done in community records? I'm assuming they have, or is this kind of step one with the onsite basics? I'm just kind of curious where that status is and.
So it is step one, it's a somewhat timely request. So what they're going to do is they'll go through and validate and build a whole big spreadsheet, rather than sending out nineteen hundred customized letters, property owner one, we need A, B, and D from you. They just sent out a form to everybody. The request is fill out as many as you can fill out, send it back in, we'll do follow up from that.
Okay. Yeah, just very curious about the whole process, so. But I will wait for the news to come out first, and then we can talk with folks at public works. Don't need to keep people up here any longer for my own curiosity.
Alistair, is there anything that stuck out from yesterday's meeting that you want to add to that conversation?
I think it was pretty clear, it'll be in the article.
Yeah, if you want it, buy a copy of the paper if you don't subscribe already. All right, um, the last one that I want to talk about is the impact fees discussion. Um, so we don't have this, this is just, this is just a looking for guidance from council. So impact fees, we do, this is when somebody builds a new residence or a new house, you owe eighty-five hundred dollars, you know, thirty-five hundred for water, blah, 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 blah. The regulations, which are dictated by the state, say that that should be updated, revisited, and updated every five years. Our last one was in two thousand and seven. One of the things that I constantly battled with or encountered when I was on city council and on planning board at the same time, is, as we had developers come in and want to do workforce housing specifically, or some of these different things, and they were looking at ways to bring those costs down. One of the frequent questions I heard was, is there a way that you can decrease or not charge those hookup fees for particular types of housing to help make it more affordable for us to do, to do that? Um, for my entire time on city council, I was told, nope, that's not an option, these are impact fees, they apply to everybody. When I went to the city training last year up in, uh, it was Helena this year, um, I specifically went to the city managers, and this was one of the questions I asked, and learned that we have three cities that are already doing, said, no, you can absolutely do that. What happens is as you do your impact study, and the city council passes the resolutions or ordinances that are accepting that, they can, they can do that. Um, and so my question to you is, I am taking on and, and, and going to make sure that we get in line on our impact fee studies. I am looking for guidance and direction from the council, and again, this doesn't have to be decided tonight, but, but general sense and began thinking about it, do we want to make accommodations for certain types of development to the city? And kind of remove that obstacle and make it more enticing to have people build those homes? Because they come in now, and they say, rather than build a sixteen unit apartment complex there, I'm going to build a big house with five hundred dollar square foot finished because my profit margin is better. So I just, I just wanted to throw that idea out there and get it kind of boiling around, particularly as we're talking about workforce housing challenges in this community. Something I've, I've, I've had a toe in for, for many years as well. Um, so comments, thoughts?
I'd, that'd be something Public Works Committee would take up would be those impact fees.
I think that'd be, I think that'd be appropriate place to have that discussion. So can we just give those one to the council president to make sure it makes it to the agenda? Any else want to add anything to that?
Yeah, I would be thrilled to see the numbers. I think the biggest thing is, yes, anywhere we can make concessions that is feasible without, at the same time, you know, shooting ourselves in the foot. Um, and I think that first we need to study, first we need to see the actual budgets for that. Um, I would love to see how much has been actually brought in from impact fees over the past, over twenty years, is that right now? Yeah, in two thousand and seven. Two thousand and seven. So two thousand and seven, it'd be great to see what those fees have been, and both also for commercial and multi-family, if that can be broken down, because I love me some data. But, I mean, that, I think would be great, just to see what those are and see what that assessment said then versus what we come up with now. Because I think I found the assessment at one point in time, and I can't find it again, I'm sure it's somewhere out in the universe, but I would love to look at that previous assessment, and then, again, get a new one put in, and before it's actually accomplished, have either that subcommittee or this group together come up with some clear objectives for what would be resourceful data for making those kinds of decisions.
And I think it'll be that subcommittee who then brings it to this group to discuss, and this group says, great, let's get it on for action, that's how I, how I picture that.
For me, on the planning board, I had asked, I know that the impact, the hookup fee is seventy-seven hundred dollars per door, so I asked, actually, what does it cost the city? And I never got a cost versus the price, ever. And so that was something that maybe the same committee could actually look into, just charging the cost for a workforce development type of thing.
And then, and then we have to look at, at, well, and the unintended consequences too, we want to make sure we don't shoot ourselves.
Well, I noticed in here that they can't be used for operations and maintenance of the facility.
Right.
Only for the enlargement of.
Right, and it can't be done to fix current inadequacies, so we have to expand it.
So it's really important, those are going to be really important when we're looking at the impact fees. I think that's, I think that's basically been ignored.
Yeah.
How much are questions from this side?
Um, who, who did the assessment the last time?
HKM.
Yeah. H.
HKM Engineering. And how much do they usually charge for doing an assessment like that?
I don't know that I have that info.
So that was for HKM.
Yeah.
Oh, okay, so it was a great western.
So this time, it was initially, there was a reach out to Great Western, uh, or Great West, I'm sorry, at the, at the end of the year. Um, and they basically pushed back and said, rather than sending it through us and having us tack on our ten percent fee to have us sub it out, why don't we just have you go directly to the individual who they recommended? So I have that contact information, I have not succeeded in making contact with them yet. Um, but, uh, again, there's lots of, lots of pebbles in the shoe right now, and kind of trying to take action on all of them and just.
Right.
Do it in a normal man's fashion.
Well, I, I think it definitely needs to be updated, and I'm a hundred percent for investigating, um, the city's ability to, in certain, certain circumstances, to either lower or waive those fees.
I look forward to seeing what council can come up with. Yeah, it's one of those things, it's yours.
Okay.
I just, I was thrilled to find out that it's a possibility after being told for years and years it's not, not even an option.
Well, maybe it wasn't an option because it wasn't written in our.
Yeah, it's, it's not an option for us unless you build it, if you do it at the same time you're doing your impact fees.
Yes, exactly.
So basically you're docking your impact fees when you do that.
Okay, perfect.
All right, um, the next agenda item is correspondence, is there anything that anybody has that they want to share? I'll just start this end of the table.
Unless you want my call.
Good. No, thank you, good.
Councilman, uh, Supin?
Of course. I know, I'm all good, thank you.
Councilwoman Deane?
Uh, I, I have something.
Yeah.
I don't know if this would be appropriate place, but I did, I got a call right before I was leaving to come here, um, about the state of the bathrooms at Land Park. And I was just wondering, and it's specifically the men's bathroom, and I don't know if there's been a change in cleaning or what, but, um, so that's a pretty, pretty much a mess.
Sounds like an administrative thing, I'm happy to follow up on that.
Thank you. Dave's in charge of that.
That's not like Dave said. However, I have, I have, I have done worse things.
I guess it's a question, um, about, I think Lonnie was sharing and just confirming that the new public, public works director will be here in February?
So one of those many things I told you I was going to forget in the mayor's comments, so the status of the two positions we had open. Um, my understanding, and I say that because I have not yet spoken, been able to touch base with, is that we've sent an offer for a public works director, and his intended start date is February fifth. Having said that, I have not touched base with him and, and confirmed that, had a conversation yet. Um, in the meantime, I am the de facto, um, manager of public works, which is not saying I'm managing public works, but I was up, that was my first meeting on Tuesday, seven o'clock, and I'm, I'm up there every Monday at seven, unless it was a snow day in which I was there but nobody else was, because they were out doing what they're supposed to do. Um, but, uh, so I'm, I'm handling that until that's the point in time, I hope to have, uh, more information for you next time. The position for the planning director, my understanding is that we made an offer and basically did not get a response. So there's a confusion whether it was a response, or it was, uh, we're not quite there yet, and again, I've reached out and left a couple of messages there, um, to find out if we need to repost that, or if it's just a, a matter of negotiation from that on salary. If we do repost, um, I anticipate, um, that I may want to look very heavily at getting somebody who, in addition to the planning experience, also has a city manager type experience, so we could move toward, uh, a chief administrative officer, who's kind of a, has that background and really good at chasing down grants and all those things that go with that position. And maybe combine those two, because my biggest challenge right now, we can do that without a change of government, um, that, you know, change of government is one mechanism to do that, but the challenge we have is how do we pay for that? And so, um, I, I, I need to, to find out where all the pieces are. Colin Powell has this saying, I promise not to throw anybody over the cliff until we know what the shape of the problem is. Um, so this is still gathering information at this point.
When, when Forrest was here, he, he was the community development director, what's the difference between that and a city planner?
So the, so a city planner is a, is a, there's, there's kind of a lot of overlap, we saw that same thing with Peter Caliano.
Yes.
And so it depends on what you, um, it depends on what you call that position, and it kind of comes back to the charter. So our charter form of government, we have a, a mayor, which is the executive branch, we have the legislative body, which is you all, um, and we do not have a city manager, but one of the things that is there, if you go back and look at the charter, the mayor may hire an assistant, and in many different towns, uh, when I went to the convention this year, I want to say it was Deer Lodge, I was sitting next, next to, a gentleman had the title of chief administrative officer. And it was basically the same thing as the city manager, the difference is they reported to the mayor rather than directly to the council. So, um, but now we're back to, we have a nineteen million dollar budget, and it'd be nice to have some real financial expertise and experience in managing that.
So what's the difference between a community development director and a city planner?
What it says, what it, what it says on the business card. It really, it really is, it is.
Title.
It is, it is.
We're sure of the word, okay, thank you.
We will, that's, so that's what I'm saying, is if we do that, what we'll do is we'll put out that job description.
Okay.
And, and basically, we call it, we call it, and we say, we want, this is the duties we want that person to have, or the, the expertise we want that person to have. You could call him a personal people leader on the business card, it doesn't matter. One eyed, blind, crippled. Councilmember Deane, did I get your question in there?
He did, thank you.
All right.
Nothing further.
Uh, we're going around on correspondence, Councilmember Ronnie?
Nope, answered.
All right. So this next section is other council business, and the intent of this, whether this be, ends up being that mini work session, or how we do that order, I'm completely open for. But our charter says that the coun, gives the council all sorts of things that they could do, if only there was a place on the agenda for them to do that. So, um, let's mix it up, we'll start on this side, do you have anything you want, as, as you go into the new year, what are some of the things you want to see, um, as far as what's important to those, those standing committees to be take up and looking at?
Um, my, my one thing that, over the last year that I've been really interested in is, um, well, besides the way that we did the standing committees, because I, like I said, I agree with what Chris recommended, where there are some heavier committees versus some not so heavy committees, and to have a little even feel on that. Um, obviously, working with the, uh, community foundation is a big one, and I think that's, uh, definitely something we need to utilize.
Um, I don't know.
Councilmember Ronnie?
Um, well, um, I, I agree with Cindy, I, I really want, um, council and the mayor to, um, if there is an ask, that they do ask the standing committees to do that work. Um, you know, and I'm not sure if something that turns up that, or that they're passionate about, you know, and the rest of council says, yeah, that's a great idea, let's move forward with that, and then go to the committee, and then come forward. Um, we had a lot of, felt sometimes that our committees were, you know, Sandy probably got operating in a vacuum almost, you know, because we didn't have a spot on our agenda to have that discussion from council saying, yeah, you know, I'd really like the wildlife ordinance and the, the animal ordinance looked at, so that we can take care of our feral cat population, so that we, um, can add in there that we don't want puppy mills in Red Lodge. You know, a lot of things like that, where I've had Bastions Main Alliance, you know, call in and say, Julie, I'm really glad you're on council, and then I couldn't do anything. You know, I'd say, uh, put it out there to the mayor at the time, and it just kind of got buried, you know, so it would be nice, I, I think that's going to be a great opportunity for us to do that.
And I, and I understand how that can happen, like I said, having, I successfully made it back to January first as far as backlog could be nailed.
Yeah.
Um, so I can, but I said, so I think that, yeah, so, yeah, you guys will have those, and you say, let's put it on to do with it.
And then it just, you know, um, on public works, you know, we had a lot of input from the sustainability board, but we also had a lot of, um, yeah, pushback, I guess you would say, on implementing that energy conservation plan. And so public works, I feel, would be a great place to help implement some of that, and how do we pay for it, and where does the money come from? You know, doing that research, coming up with grants, with, you know, helping the sustainability board implement the energy conservation. know, helping the sustainability board implement the energy conservation plan, you know, things like that. So, I guess, to me, it's just taking that direction from, from council. Well, it'll give us the opportunity to be more vocal about what our constituents are saying is important to them, and it's not happening, because like you say, there's other, you know, all this other stuff going on. Any bright objects that we're going for, and, you know, there's a lot of other work to be done, so.
Councilmember Heaton?
I think the conversation about impact fee tonight is really interesting, and I'm looking forward to hearing more about that. I'm looking forward to, you know, meeting the, the new public works director, and, and the planning director, whenever we get that, hire that person hired, to really see how we can help them in their position. There's a lot of work to be done, and I think, especially in public work, that's really essential, that that's a smooth transition, because it's a huge part of keeping everything going in the city. So I'm anxious for that opportunity to get your, to meet him. I think one thing that, um, I, that I, one of the reasons I said that I would be the fire district representative again, is because the deannexation of the ambulance district was on the ballot and did not pass. And that has some really severe implications for our community.
Can I add a clarification? It wasn't the deannexation that was on the ballot, it was just a change from a cooperate to a mill. It, it didn't, and so it wasn't the deannexation that was there?
Oh, it's, so the ambulance? Yeah.
So, so, so there's, there's a couple of different conversations, I think, that are here, maybe I'm confusing it. So, the ambulance district had, they had a flat dollar amount, sixty-seven dollars, I think. The, the, with the tag. The problem with the flat dollar amount is it doesn't change automatically.
Correct.
If you went to a mill, it then automatically goes up and down, and, and that's the benefit of mills, is you pass it once, and it kind of adjusts with inflation and everything else. That was the only thing that I was aware of voting on, and, and that did not pass, and they're going to revisit that.
Right.
That's a separate conversation than the deannexation, which is
Fire department.
Of, of the fire department, which is a statutory requirement of immunity to vitality through fire. And they, that was, this is going to be Dave's personal feelings that play into this conversation, I'll, I'll preface it with that. The, the benefit of having deannexed the fire, the, the statute says, the city has to provide it unless it's available via another means. The primary goal of that, and this was something that, that started when I was on council, kind of came up, and it kind of got shut down for the reason that I'm going to, was what happened is, the fire district would go separately, like on the county mills, and get that twenty-eight mills, twenty-seven or twenty-eight, it's twenty-eight. And the primary benefit of that was that the mills available to the city now went up by twenty-eight mills without having to go for the voters and saying, can we get an increase in the general mills? It was, we didn't raise your taxes, the fire district raised your taxes. And, and at that time, we didn't feel that was a very genuine approach to doing that. And so that's why that, so when you say deannexation, that's the conversation I'm thinking of. Am I, am I getting it mixed up?
I, I don't, I think so, but I don't think we need to I think that, that the issue of not being enough money for the services that our fire department provides is in jeopardy.
It is.
And that's what we need to figure out.
Yeah.
So that's what I'm looking forward to, and on that district board, and then probably on the public health and safety committee as well, that's probably where that will split.
Yeah.
Yeah, we don't have to solve all the problems tonight.
No.
The, 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 we've already, we've, the, the first meeting we're going to go on, sorry, no. Councilmember Heaton?
There goes my hockey game.
Oh, was that tonight?
Yeah.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's okay.
You know, in addition to what everybody said, I, I've got a few things to, and had I known this was coming, I would have prepared more, but, I think it's important to continue to recognize that we need to fund the city, and that our budget is not in great shape. I, I also feel really strongly, I, as I know all of you do about workforce housing, that we need to do whatever we can to help support those efforts. I would like to see us have the, I've worked remotely for twenty-three years, beyond that, and I know you do that too, and it's entirely possible to be online and participate in a meeting, and I think that it's ludicrous in this day and age that we don't allow people who have to travel, like Kelly, and sometimes me, to vote when we're on the road. So I would really love to make that happen. And then a small thing, you know, we get a lot of emails addressed to the whole council, and right now, I don't think there's a mechanism for who's supposed to answer, and how you answer. And it gets a little confusing, because I feel like people pour their heart and soul into these letters, and they're great, but who's responsible for answering them? And do we all then just say thank you, or, so I'd like to
I would look forward to hearing how we decide to handle that.
I personally would like to address them here. Like, but, again, that can be further discussion, and we're at eight-thirty already, and I'm like, let's do more, but, but, like, in my brain, I think it'd be good to actually address those, those comment, like, that comment here, at this, as a public conversation, and as opposed to them not being able to be here at the podium, I think it's worth it for people in the room to be able to hear it. So that's my personal thought. And then, again, I think it resonates a little bit better, and you feel a little bit more heard when it's actually brought to a public space, and not just online and, and that.
Put in a package.
Exactly.
Councilmember Conroy?
I, I would like to make really clear that the boards, not these committees, because you've got, you know, the council, and you've got committees, and then you've got boards, that the boards really don't have any authority to approve, that they can, you know, bring it to the city council for us to approve or not for our consent, because I felt that that kind of fell through with, I know, the observatory project. The park board got more information than the city council seemed to have, and the planning board was left completely out of it, and that should have also been a part of it. So I'd like to make sure that, that every entity involved in one project is, is involved in it. And I think that that fell through in that particular project. So I just want to make sure that, that, that the boards know that they don't have the final authority, and that it needs to go here, and we need the same information that the board had, rather than just a flat information. I know when the planning board brings it forward, there's a lot of information, but I don't think that that's been happening. And what we have, the sustainability board, the planning board, U R D, H R C board, H R C board, Luther Tech, well, I have the screen.
I, I, so I hope we can use, like I said, this kind of object as a, take a catch-up off, or whatever you guys see that we're missing.
So I'd like that process to be procedural, process to be
So, would, do you think admin would take that up, or would that be more, I, I think it would depend on the board? Or do we just do it the same for all of it?
Maybe as overarching, like, requirement, potentially, I don't know.
And, and, and there's, and, and even beyond the standing committees doing that, if we've got a spot here where we can talk about it, if somebody can say, hey, what's the status of this, and make sure, this is the spot where they can come in and do that. Like I said, this is the part of agenda that you guys control.
What Sandy's saying is that planning board, if they, you know, make changes to any of the documents, it comes to council for approval. And if there's an M O U in place, it comes to council for approval. But in the case where a structure was built on public land, the footprint changed, and that did not come to council to, you know, for reapproval, we had approved a certain amount. The same thing, I mean, there's going to be other projects where we're, we're hoping in the future to build things in our parks. And so, how much oversight do you want council to have on that?
How much council, do you, how much oversight do you want council?
I, I don't want to overs, you know, say that wrong or anything for Sandy, but, I mean, so she's saying, I believe that she would like to see procedures in place for, for that. If there's something being built on city land, you know
It should go through planning board, and
And then, does council have the final vote on it?
Yeah, I mean, that's what I'm thinking, and, and it needs to be a solid, not just a vague, like with that one, was, was just a vague type of thing. And I think that there should be better rules before it gets to us.
Which one are you thinking about?
The observatory. In other words, it would seem to me that the planning board should have had some say in it at all, because you're building a city-owned land. And in, in one of those instances, I found out that they didn't even have the money to finish the project, just to start the project. So all I'm saying is, on our city-owned land, we're going to have buildings half-started, because we didn't actually have a good process in mind when we, when we approved it. It needs to be fully funded prior to being built.
So that would be the procedure thing?
And that would be one of the procedures, one of the requirements before approval. And I, and
Specifically for public.
And I think that that's happened before, where the planning board made some determination, and it didn't get all the way through to the building department. So, there seems to be a lack of communication between the boards and the people who actually do it. And that's something I'd just like to try to touch that up as best I can.
Thank you. Guys, folks?
Anything on your list?
The, this is the council member's list portion. Michael, Michael, the, the reason I did this is I felt like I have a pretty good understanding of, of what the mayor's responsibilities are, and also what they aren't, and when, that the mayor is the executive. And then I guess while we're on that, I would ask you to all be very careful. I'm going to, I'm going to hopefully finish the org chart the way I envision it, and, and have it posted D L R, to see some implements of it. That show, the mayor does report into the council collectively as a body. I've had a, a couple of council members who've reached out to me and said, I really think we should look into this. And my response is, and, and I was, and will continue to be, I would be happy to take that direction from that council collectively. And then on the flip side of that, I would appreciate that you guys recognize that the job of managing staff falls to the mayor and not to council members. If there are concerns, I certainly welcome having a heads up of something I need to look at from an administrative standpoint, whether that be toilets, whether that be roads that have high snow on the cross-sections of Broadway that we need to pay more attention to. I'm happy to take those up with the appropriate department heads and manage to get those results there. That's the, that's the job I volunteered and signed up for. So, so, thank you. I hope, and then went back to that, my hope is that as we do this, there's a sense of letting go. There's some, and I may have opinions on something. One of the other things, while we're on that Pardon?
Speak again.
Yeah. One of, one of the things, as mayor, I certainly retain and have the right for a veto, or to cast a tie-breaking vote, but I really, really, really hope I don't have to. And I will tell you that if there's a tie-breaking vote, the process that's going to go on, in my mind, is, is this so important, this decision has to be made right now? Because if it's not, the most likely response is going to be, you guys take this back until there's at least four of you who agree on that. I, I think if we do that, and, and I think if I set that expectation and, and stick to it, that it will cause, it'll, it'll create the environment that's conducive to the whole council working together. Like I said, you guys are the city. Anytime, when you're reading this general stuff, and it says, and the city, you guys, for election purposes and whatever, are the city. My job is to run the city based on the direction that you guys provide via ordinances and resolutions. Does that create any questions or comments? Councilmember Heaton, would you make a motion on number fifteen, please?
Yes, I move to adjourn the meeting.
Second. It does not require a vote. And I was going to say, thank you to all of you for coming and sticking that out. Thank you. I don't know, I went two and a half hours.